Call in the Tuesday, January 10th Planning Board meeting to order. At this time, we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and amendment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time I'm going to ask for any disqualifications on any of the cases to be heard tonight. Hearing none, we're gonna, I'm gonna announce that we do have a quorum. At this time, I think we have everybody. It's nice to see everyone. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda at this time.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Item five under the next area is approval of our minutes from our May 13th, 2025 meeting. If y'all had a chance to look at it, it was a fairly short meeting. Wasn't a whole lot to go over. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the May 13th, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, seeing no old business, we're going to move on to new business.
Chad, if you could, can you get the PowerPoint on the monitor?
Here we go. All right, thank you. First case to be heard this evening is Planning Board 25-11, James Eaton, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to establish a new use type, warehouse, storage and distribution, limited access in the light industrial and heavy industrial districts and establish use-specific standards. At this time, we're going to hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by just talking about what the ordinance does currently allow for storage and distribution. Currently, that isn't allowable use in both the light and heavy industrial zoning districts. There are some specific standards that apply to that use that would restrict it to not being closer than 500 feet to residential zoning districts, schools, and childcare You can also kind of infer from the description of the use that's currently in the ordinance that it has the potential to be large scale. There's no limit on the size of buildings or the scale of the use. It would allow the use of tractor trailers. So the intent of this amendment is to allow for some storage still in the industrial zones, both light and heavy, but with restrictions on it that would make it more appropriate to be closer in proximity to the residential developments. So you can see here where we're adding this into the use table in the light and heavy industrial zoning districts, under the name warehouse, storage and distribution, limited access, and it's in the warehouse and freight movement use category with specific standards in section 4.2.5b7. And here are the proposed specific standards for the new use. The use shall be limited to straight trucks for deliveries and pickups and shall not exceed 20 trips per day, and we'll talk about some of the definitions that may explain exactly what that means. The use of tractor trailers or semi-trucks for deliveries and pickups is prohibited. The total floor area of all associated buildings shall not exceed 10,000 square feet, and onsite manufacturing and hazardous material storage are prohibited as well. The established or the proposed parking standards for this use are in the category which allows flexibility. It gives staff the option of looking in the parking handbook as well as requiring a traffic impact study if it becomes necessary. Okay, here are the definitions that are proposed. Straight, I'm going to go kind of backwards so that it might make more sense. Straight trucks is a vehicle with a fixed trailer or bed where the cargo area is attached directly to the cab on a single frame, making it a self-contained unit. Examples include, but are not limited to, box trucks and pickup trucks. So that eliminates the use of a tractor trailer for this particular use. Trip is defined as a one-way journey that proceeds from an origin to a destination via a single mode of transportation. And finally, the definition of the use itself, a storage and distribution facility that operates with a maximum of 20 trips per day, utilizes only straight trucks, and does not involve onsite manufacturing or hazardous material storage. So when you apply the definition of trip to this definition of the use, it says 20 trips per day. That is, each time a vehicle comes in or leaves, that counts as one of those 20. So if you really think about it, it's 10 round trips, basically. Any questions on any of that?
Any questions for staff? So this was brought about because in the past it was under heavy industrial? Is that where warehousing was?
It's allowed in both.
Yeah.
Light and heavy. But this was brought about because the applicant, Mr. Eaton, who's here tonight, was proposing a use in a heavy industrial zone, on a heavy industrial zone lot, but there's standards in the ordinance that require the use to be separated from residential, adjacent residential. And so in looking at the ordinance and the uses that were laid out, it seemed like maybe there was a gap there, and what he, how he was actually trying to use the site was not going to be distribution in the sense that you might think of lots of trucks and heavy trucks.
In and out.
The things that might impact adjacent residential uses.
Okay. Okay, so it's just basically to tweak the definitions and make sure we have a better understanding of what's required?
It's a brand-new use.
It is.
So it's a less intense
Right.
Distribution and storage use than what's already out there, which is kind of unlimited other than the fact that you can't be within 500 feet. There are some other standards, but yeah, it's basically to take that, to make it palatable so you can take that 500-foot setback away.
Okay.
With no setback at all.
Well, other than what normally applies to the development of a lot or the buffers that are already required between zoning districts, those are all still in place. But yeah, it could be.
Currently, where are we with a lot? Setbacks 10 feet?
In heavy and light industrial. I have to look. Light industrial has a 15-foot side setback, 25-foot rear, and 20-foot front, and 50-foot major arterial setback, and the same for heavy industrial.
Is there a limitation on the building size? I mean, I thought you started saying the height there is.
Yeah.
I mean, height.
Well, the height would just be what already applies in the county, a mean roof height of 35 feet.
Okay.
Or is it 60?
65 in industrial.
Yeah, it's higher in industrial zone, yep. So it could be 65, isn't it?
Aren't most of those
Yeah.
Aren't most of those flat roofs, though? So that means they can go up our very low slope, so they could go up 35 feet with that low-slope roof, right?
No, 60 feet.
No, I think it's 60, 65. She's looking to make sure.
Up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any type of warehouse is going to be higher.
65.
65.
So you literally could have residential right next door to, that can only go up 35 feet, mean, to looking at another 30 feet above it.
And heavy industrial at 65, and light industrial is 35.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not common that you have in the county, well, there aren't that many industrial lots anyway, and it's not common that they're directly adjacent to residential zoning districts.
Do we know how many there are? And then, I mean, do we know how many, you know?
How many acres?
Now, how this could impact those subdivisions that might be closer to this?
There's this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's this one. There's Dr. Newburn, perhaps?
Where is this one located?
Well, this is a text amendment that applies for the county.
Right.
But this particular property is down off of
West Side Lane.
Yeah.
Kilmar Lake area. It's where Nelson Salvagard used to be.
Mm-hmm.
So this would be county-wide, not just
Correct.
Various other
It's a text amendment to the ordinance that applies to all
Right, applies to all of it.
Any use in those zoning districts.
Theoretically, we could have 15-foot setback off of 168 and have warehouses in these light industrial areas.
Well, 168 has an increased setback because it's a major arterial street.
Okay, and what is that one?
And there's not that much of the industrial zoning on the highway.
Yeah.
There are a few spots, but there's not a lot of it.
Okay.
It's mostly general business, isn't it?
Yeah.
158, 168.
Pretty much this is saying, all right, we're already deemed heavy industrial.
Yeah.
Basically, what it's saying is, I want to do a warehousing use that is less intense than a typical warehouse use.
Right.
And the property is adjacent to residential, and so here are some standards that are going to make my use not as impactful. I mean, if setbacks are a concern or height is a concern, that could, those specific standards for this particular use could be discussed and added to the amendment as a recommendation toward the Board of Commissioners. I would just advise to, you know, maybe have the discussion with the applicant about what those might be.
Okay. Are they currently not allowed to be adjacent to residential?
This particular use, storage and distribution in the ordinance currently has a 500-foot setback from residential zoning districts.
And so it'll go to the setbacks you just gave us, which sound pretty much like a
It'd be next door, yeah, right. Yeah.
I don't have, I can't get to the
What the law currently uses.
The only thing I'd be having heartburn over is that height. Looking out your back door.
I want to
I mean, it was already existing.
I mean, I think his location is probably okay, but does that apply? Want to, it's the whole county, yes.
What are you looking for?
That's, that's, yeah.
I'm just going to show you the zoning map so you can see
That's great.
Where the existing heavy industrial is.
Oh, that's awesome.
And keep in mind, this, that setback that's in the ordinance while we're looking at this applies to residential zoning districts, not necessarily uses. So you could have a residence in a general business zoning district that already isn't protected from this type of use, the way it's in the ordinance, or in the ag zone. Or it's not working.
This thing does like to take its time updating.
Jason, what did you just say? I mean, would you mind repeating that last one?
Yeah, so the setback that's in the ordinance for storage and distribution now, currently, applies to residential zoning districts. So single-family mainland, MXR, which happens to be the case for the lot across from him. It doesn't apply to residential uses across the board, so, because you can have a house in an ag zone or a general business zone, which are not residential zoning districts.
Okay.
I guess the map's just not working in any browser currently.
Hmm. You want to let it sit for a minute?
And I think Jenny said it was 55 feet that there is what's currently approved for warehouse.
65 for the height.
55 for the height.
65.
In heavy industrial.
65, okay, all right.
Yeah, and it was regular 35 in light industrial? The normal, the normal height in the light industrial zone?
Sorry, I don't think I've seen that. So we're really just making the changes in the light industrial?
Nope, both.
Both, yeah, so you could have, so the 55-foot, or, I'm sorry, 65 could go next door residential with the
Yeah.
The lesser setbacks, okay.
If you, if you were going to suggest a height restriction, it would only affect the heavy, though, because it's already normal in light.
Right.
Yeah.
So there could be added a specific standard that has a max height for this use as 35, if that was, you know, a standard that the board felt should be included.
I would imagine that here.
Okay.
Already in a heavy industrial area.
You know, when you hear about this, it's the guy approved, and then it goes next to a residential, then all the residents are going to come in.
I don't either.
Buy a house by everybody's East Coast demo.
Yeah.
You already know what's happening, you know what I mean?
So with the 2020 trucks a day, there's really no way to police that or enforce that. I mean, you're just
Well, you could enforce it if you needed to, if there was an issue.
So, yeah, complaint would cause enforcement, right?
Yeah, like all our enforcement is complaint-based, and then we, the code enforcement officer.
I think what's tough is that it probably applies to this area right here for his property.
Jenny, were you trying to pull this up to show us
Generically.
How many heavy industrial zones there are in the county?
Yeah, I was just going to show you the map that shows where the heavy and light industrial
Not working.
Yeah, and I've, I've not experienced the map not loading zoning districts before, so.
It moves slow, I know.
That's a lot of material.
We're in it all day long, every day, and I've, this is not
It doesn't typically move slow with our internet connection.
It's how it moves every time I look at it.
Uh-huh, me too. That happens out where we are, somebody spun their tires on the wires.
Patrick create something with that?
See those orange wires all over the road out there? They didn't even try and bury it.
Oh, gotcha. We don't have an exported version of it or anything.
I don't, it doesn't seem like that's going to be an option tonight.
Okay.
But there's not a lot of heavy industrial.
And most of it's down county, isn't it?
Um, there's quite a bit down there. There's also Wind Chaser, where the concrete plant is.
Right.
And a couple more places in Moyoc. Yeah, there's some grandy as well.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's not a whole lot anyway to begin with.
Yeah.
And to confirm that even with the schools, childcare centers, those setbacks still, the 500-foot setback would still be in place?
Not for this particular
No, no, not if you qualified for the limited access that we're, that we're, that he's proposing to add to the ordinance today. That goes away.
Oh, okay.
Because if we can go back to the specific standards, yeah, there's nothing in here about the setback.
That'd be good, thanks, Chad.
Yeah, so basically 20 trips, which it counts in and out, so it's, it's really 10. If you're going to go pick something up, load it up, and leave, that's two. And only straight trucks, so, no, probably, most likely not, not a large loading dock, not air brakes, and lifts and forklifts and that sort of thing, noise, basically.
Typically, the buffer is just the land 500-foot. It's not required to be vegetated or anything right now. Is that correct?
Um, setbacks, like the one that's in place with the 500 feet, that's just distance.
It's just distance.
And the, but the buffers that are already in place and will remain in place, there's type A, B, C, D buffers.
Uh-huh.
D being the most dense.
Right.
Um, that still will be in place because it's between zoning districts, different zoning districts. So between industrial zoning districts and residential ones, it requires that more intense buffer yard.
There we go.
And that's 25 feet wide, heavily vegetated.
And is, that buffer is only, you're talking about the thickness of the buffer, really not the height of the buffer, right? So
Well, we, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, at first, when you're planting, it won't be much.
Right.
Yeah. Eight-foot, eight-foot canopy trees that have to grow up, shrubs and
But there's, there's no, there's nothing required there as to a minimum height or a maximum height of whatever the buffer is.
The buffers are
Yeah.
Are defined, okay.
And what, how it's supposed to be installed at the beginning are also defined.
Yeah, so the canopy trees have to be at least 30 feet at maturity, 30 feet or more.
Okay.
Understory trees are 30 and under, and shrubs have a minimum three-gallon size at planting.
And what is the width of a D-class buffer?
There's, there's two options. One is 25 feet wide, just vegetation, certain number of vegetation per 100 feet, and then there's a 10-foot wide option for constrained properties where it involves a six-foot-tall opaque fence and vegetation, but less of it.
Okay, so we'll
Yep.
Right Memorial Bridge. The first little bit goes right here beside the GetGo Convenience Store, where I think there's a hardy storage building there. There's some light industrial there. Keep moving north, you can see there's some light industrial here out on the highway. This is just south of the water park. It's where, it's near where the Millen carpet is. There's this piece back here of heavy industrial that is behind the water park. And that's it.
So the only one that's
That's all we have.
So that's it, there's really
There's, I'm going to keep going, that's really not it.
I didn't think that was it, that's as far
This is just, yeah.
You'll notice that the one she was, the one she was just pointing at doesn't have any residential zoning around it at all.
Like this one doesn't, this one doesn't.
Yeah, the one, the really small little piece, though, down south.
The one you showed at first does have that.
Yeah, that's got S of, single-family.
Mm-hmm. Jumps all over the place.
It's probably similar to like a contractor services use that's being proposed here.
Yeah, which is allowed in general business, so. Because that, that use has the requirement that you have an office in there, no specification of the size of the office, but the rest of it is storage and common for people to be in and out of those buildings with similar trucks that we're proposing here.
You can see here, there's this industrial park, which is Freedom Park, which is adjacent to some residential zoning.
Mm-hmm.
But that is buffered back, though, isn't it?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, 500 feet, or is that what that is from the residential for that place in particular?
Well, that depends on the use and whether the ordinance requires that or not, so, not necessarily.
There are some residential laws setback right up to the
Right back at the
Yeah. Here is Fox Knoll Commerce, which is behind, I believe that's behind Soundfeet Shoes. There's some light industrial at the back there, and you can see surrounded by ag, some HI on the highway here with no residential zoning around it, some HI back here. This is here and by the weeping radish. Some residential on the backside there. This, some of this is proposed for self-service storage use.
I feel like I'm going to dial updates.
Oh, waiting for the update, Jason. What is, who defines what the, the definition of hazardous material? Is that the state defines it?
I don't know if we have a definition of that or not. That, that appears in other specific standards, restriction of that.
Okay.
That's why we included that. But I can check, see if we have a definition of that.
Where, where at the canal?
Where at Coin Shop.
Coin Shop.
Moving slow.
It's a little bit here, near Kellogg, just to the south of Kellogg.
Yeah, we're
No residential around it.
To answer your question, we're referencing the general statute definition of hazardous materials elsewhere in the ordinance, so that's what we would use, the state definition.
Heavy industrial around the airport.
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Don't see any in the courthouse area. So you can see there's really limited industrial zoning in the county.
Up in Moyoc, though, there is some industrial, correct?
There is, yeah, but it's limited even there.
I don't believe Wind Chaser has anything residential zoning around it.
I don't think so. Some HI here, that's Wind Chaser.
There's a little bit on the north side.
Right. Yeah, solar farms back in there.
We're almost there. All right, a little bit here on the south side of Countryside Estates.
There are some MXRs out here.
And HI here. This is all vacant.
Yeah.
So HI piece over here, which is, most likely needs the setback.
At this time, I know the applicant is here, so if you just want to come forward Sure. And state your name and address for the board.
My name is James Eaton. I live in Southern Shores at 138 Oyster Bed Lane.
My name is James Eaton. I live in Southern Shores at one thirty-eight Oyster Bed Lane.
Just plead your case.
I got you. All right, so I own just for the beach rentals. And, uh, we intend to use, uh, a warehouse-type storage facility for, mainly for off-season storage. In-season, most of our stuff goes to the beach, you know, over the course of, you know, like right in now, it's pretty much all there about this time of year. But, um, you know, over the course of a few weeks, and, um, then it predominantly goes house to house. We do have a few vehicles that will move in and out for like repairs and, you know, or, you know, the odd items that we haven't gotten on the beach yet. The restrictions as currently proposed would well suit our needs. An additional height restriction would not interfere with our purposes. In fact, we were planning, I, I thought it was thirty-five feet anyway. Our, our buildings are already, you know, proposed to be less than that. We're proposing about six thousand square feet, you know, less than the ten thousand limit. And our, you know, we've, uh, we've purchased the property, um, and, uh, that used to be the Nelson's spot there, and we've cleared it, removed, I think it was, two hundred tons of tires. So, you know, you know...
You said two hundred tons?
Two hundred tons, yeah, of tires and, and other random debris. But, you know, it certainly is our intent to, you know, make that area better. You know, we wanna have a nice facility for ourselves to work in. Uh, we'll have, uh, some, our intent is to put some small, uh, office space for our staff, um, you know, our general manager and myself and our bookkeeper. Just to have a place to do our, our business, but predominantly it's just gonna store our stuff over in the off-season and allow for, uh, you know, us to move it, move in and out our gear, you know, to put it in service.
And what, 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 what will be stored there?
Oh, like bikes and kayaks and...
So to service the beaches?
Yeah, yeah, umbrellas and chairs, all that kinda stuff.
Nothing that's gonna be palletized or up on racks or anything like that, just basic storage of, of...
Yeah, we don't use forklifts or anything like that. Everything is, you know, our guys need to be able to pull off a shelf with their hands. So, yeah, we do, um, uh, like baby equipment as well and cribs and, you know, stuff like that. So we have a need to keep things inside in a little bit, you know, temperature-controlled, especially over the winter time. We don't like things getting moldy and...
Do you work with rental companies?
Yeah, yeah, we work with property managers and we work directly with, you know, guests, you know, customers.
Certain things, then...
Yeah, we have a few...
Going out and buying them, you, you can provide.
Exactly. Yeah, we have a few, you know, like standing contracts with, say, Brinley Beach or Tweedy or people like that.
Nice business.
It keeps us busy, that's for sure.
Nice business, yeah. All right, any, any questions from Mr. Eaton? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more questions for staff or any discussion between board and the person?
Well, I would personally, I would like, like to see a little bit, some kinda setback there.
And you can add that when you make a motion.
The height is...
Then you said light industrial already had a height.
Light industrial, thirty-five, yes.
Yeah, light industrial's the normal height for most places.
Even residential.
It's the heavy industrial that allows up to sixty-five.
Right, so by the, under this, that DNC's already, this area, it's already hot, heavy industrial. If, if this was approved, would it make it to where it has to follow the light industrial requirements or the heavy industrial for the height?
It would, it would just allow him to, or whoever was trying to establish this use in heavy industrial to go to sixty-five feet or any other use in heavy industrial. Unless you propose the height, height restriction.
But you can go sixty-five in heavy industrial now.
Limited distribution and storage use. You're taking away the five hundred foot requirement for residential district setback. It makes sense to me to go ahead and add a height restriction.
I, I agree.
It's, that's the intent. It's not a big distribution hub. It's a smaller storage, little bit of distribution.
Not really a distribution center, like an Amazon warehouse.
And that's why it was written this way, and he doesn't intend to operate, and I don't think people that are coming in under, under this use intend to operate that way. That, that would just be a setting you up for failure. If you said you were gonna do only straight trucks and then you needed semi-trucks to bring here.
Yeah, yeah, it's very limited on, on the number of trips and the types of vehicles that can come in and out.
It wouldn't even probably work for an operation like that, yeah. And just to give you some scale, I think the Dollar General building across the road is between nine and ten thousand square feet. So gives you an idea of the size.
Okay. And what's the height of the Dollar Generals?
Uh, they're not, they're, they're not even to the thirty-five, yeah.
You're saying this would automatically fall in that tougher, tougher buffer, the D?
Yes, but it would, um, if, but I don't think it's, those typically stretch across the street, so. He, in this particular instance, it wouldn't require that, but it would if it were adjacent to it.
Okay, it's not...
Okay.
And when we ask for a motion, you know, make sure, you know, you can add any, any language that rather height restrictions or setback restrictions, you know, commissioners will certainly consider that when they, when they be...
Well, then we should come together, cause you were thinking of an additional, um, setback restriction. Yeah, cause if you, if, if we go to no restrictions, then this is based on what, you know, whatever it is and what the UDO says. Right. I mean, I'd, I'd be satisfied personally, hundred, hundred twenty-five maybe to give it a little bit of distance off the road. I'm not, I don't know.
Off the road or, or adjacent, or, or off of residential?
From the residential. From the residential.
Right.
Okay. I, I think that, um, let's say...
Now, Cruz, and let's go back down and look, um, at his site, just so you can see his site and why he's here with his text amendment. That doesn't mean that that has to be a recommendation, but I'll just show you.
Also, I was incorrect. Those, the buffers do apply across right-of-ways, which is the situation here. So he'd be required to put that type-D buffer in on the front.
Okay.
Which would block it from the residential across the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and we have vegetation standards and things like that.
They're already in place, yeah.
Yeah, all right. It's not like it's a noisy thing. I think it's, you know, so, I mean, I could, I could understand the distance buffer if we were talking about something that's pretty noisy. But with straight trucks, you're, you're not...
It's the skinny one next to it. I think so, yeah.
Thinking about the future. Yeah, yeah. Cause this will be count, this will be counting.
Anything but the right-of-way width in between.
So here's the site where he's proposing his use, obviously the text amendment applies countywide. Right here are those cottages out in front of Kilmarlick.
Right.
That have mixed residential zoning designation. So this is the property that is requiring that separation of the five hundred feet, which is impossible to meet. And as you can see, there's not very much distance here between the property lines of the proposed use and the existing residential.
There are some, um, there are some specific standards or restrictions in the ordinance that would measure to the actual residence and not to the zoning district, to the use and, and not to the zoning district. So I'm not sure what that distance is between the nearest house.
Well, that's interesting, right.
It's still well within, huh?
Hundred and thirty-two-ish feet, so one twenty-five.
And that's already in place on, on some documents already.
Some, some specific standards you would measure to the use and not to the zoning district.
I, I think that makes sense. And this one would meet then, so you've got over a hundred feet there if you're talking about the house to it. The only thing it leaves for me is that I, if I was living in those houses, I wouldn't wanna look at thirty-five feet up above, uh, you know, or thirty feet more of building. So I, I, that, that would be the one that I would think I'd worry about in the future. And of course, there's none, none of the residents here looking at this potential change, but I guarantee if you put that change, it'll be here. First time a warehouse at sixty-five-foot height goes up next to a residence. That, that's really the only thing I see as, as kinda the kicker in this.
Yeah. With this particular application, it's fine.
Right, and, and you're right to, to consider it countywide.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was, like, I'm just looking, I'm just thinking about the future.
Yeah.
You know, in this case, I'm sorry. Oh, I like your idea, and I, I like that idea too, from the residents, the nearest residents, you know? So it's not really taken from the property, it's taken from the nearest residents. I don't know how to word that in here, cause you already have the word in there, but...
Let me see if I can't find that for you.
But that would only, that would only change things if they added more light industrial or heavier industrial to the county grid.
Right, and we'd have to rezone that.
Cause everything else is...
It would have to be rezoned.
Have to be rezoned. From ag.
Thinking, you know, ten years down the line. Now, it wouldn't apply if somebody decided to put in a residential next to an already existing warehouse. Sorry.
Then you're doing that to yourself knowingly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like having something already there, even under an airport and complaining.
Right.
And if something's being rezoned, they're gonna consider that anyway when they rezone it.
Right.
So what were you thinking, a hundred foot from the nearest residence? At, at least, but I mean, appears, in this case, it would appear that, you know, it's okay. Yeah. Yeah, but I think at least a hundred from the nearest residence, just to... But, that's, it brings up another interesting thing. So if there's a lot there, which could be, a, a house could go on, you know, then somebody's knowingly gonna be, they would have to disclose that, you know, you're gonna be closer to this warehouse.
I think unless something was being rezoned, I think they're already zoned and kinda set up the way it is without the distance restriction. I agree with the height restriction.
Right.
I understand what you're saying as well. I, I feel like definitely put the height in there, but I think if something's gonna be rezoned, they're gonna hopefully have the forethought like you're thinking of when you, to consider the rezoning. Cause currently, nothing else is gonna be rezoned to, you know, everything that's zoned already already exists and everybody knows it.
And, and the measurement goes from the building, correct?
No, it's...
Or from the lot?
Depends on how it's worded.
Okay.
This right here, I'm, I'm adding into, I don't know if you can see that on your screen, I'm just adding it into the, the PowerPoint here at the bottom. Um, that, that could be a potential, you know, setback component.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, the way it's stated, it's the dwelling and not the property line.
That's how this is written.
That's what says residential dwelling unit.
Dwelling.
Now, the current language is residential district, which would mean where that actual zoning district starts.
District start, not where the dwelling is. There's a big, that's a big difference.
It is.
Yeah.
So, like I say, it gets you into trouble if, if there's just an empty lot there, somebody hasn't built on for whatever reason.
If you can't calculate the setback, so you would know where that building...
Right, when, when they, yeah, that's gonna be their problem.
They would be able to, they would have to be within those setbacks, the residential.
Exactly. They've got, they've got stipulations that they've got to deal with.
But then you can, then you kinda, you could gridlock some of these lots from, from a residence, and it could happen, so.
Could. Well, if the lots are big enough, then, you know, they can setback further.
That looks right.
So you're talking about the industrial or the...
The residential. See, if a residential comes in after, after this, and they wanna put a single family...
Right, that they hadn't built on it yet. That could ham them up in their development.
Absolutely.
From, from their lots along, you know...
From their dwelling.
From their dwelling.
From their dwelling.
I, I feel...
Lot, which there's not much you can do, but there is some, there's gonna be some flexibility on the dwelling.
Yes. So there's no, there's no language that says nearest residential property line, correct? Is that, it's just...
They say dwelling.
Could you do property line? Can you make it the property line is the question. Could you make it a property line?
Of course you can, look...
That can complicate things though.
Talking about setback?
Yeah. Like if we're a hundred foot from the nearest residential property line.
Well, that's the same as saying zoning district.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I just look at it, I'm, I'm listening to this and thinking about it and thinking how this one could lead to another where somebody who could literally have a residential lot and the warehouse went in and now they're gonna be a good bit closer. It's not, they're not held up from putting it on their lot, but they're gonna...
They can come in afterwards and still place a house there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And they just knowingly have to say, oh, well, I'm a little bit closer to the warehouse. Okay, yeah, I get it, all right.
But it can be added, you know? I mean, Jenny, you put that, you just put that in, that you shall not exceed on the, on the height restriction there, okay.
Yeah.
It's just a rough language if you guys like that or...
Yeah, I think, no, that's, I think that works for the occasion, don't you think?
I think, I think that's, yeah, I mean, I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
So y'all, y'all wanna add in like a...
Especially, again, Mr. Eaton, your property is like this for you. It's no problem.
I think you just interject this, you're good.
Thinking across the board.
Things are already zoned accordingly, so.
Yeah.
The distance is kinda complicates things, and then if it's rezoned, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, I think, I'm, I'm just looking at down, down the road.
Well, cause see, you could have a, a lot with just a little dog leg coming out, you know? But that, the, the dwelling's not gonna be there, it's gonna be somewhere else. And, and you're, you don't wanna measure from that little dog leg point, you wanna measure it from the dwelling.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
That's okay.
You know?
Yeah.
All right.
So, all right. Who wants to make this complicated motion?
Well, Jenny will help hold our hand and help us through this.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve PB twenty-five eleven. With the conditions for, I move to conditionally approve PB twenty-five eleven James Eaton text amendment with the following conditions. The use shall not be located within a hundred feet of a residential dwelling unit. Buildings associated with the use in the high indu, industry, industrial district shall not exceed thirty-five feet in height.
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial. Because it, because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of Imagine Curry Tuck Twenty-Forty Vision Plan and the UDO, including land use goals one, three, land use policy two-point-two and economic development goal.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Mm-hmm.
Have a good evening.
What if it's his brother that's the engineer with it, surveying the engineering?
Okay, moving on. Planning Board twenty-five dash oh-six, Curry Tuck County, requests to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to allow additional minor subdivision lots and revise minor subdivision standards. This time we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a Board of Commissioners-sponsored text amendment related to minor subdivisions, which also includes, um, some changes to family subdivisions and infrastructure associated with both. Staff did, um, participate in work sessions with the Board of Commissioners, one back in February on the twenty-sixth. Um, it was quite a long work session where some initial direction was received from the board. Then after taking a look at the ordinance and trying to implement those changes, a couple of other, um, uh, items came up that we wanted some input from the board on, and we, uh, did receive additional input from the board at the June third work session. So just about a week ago. So we tried to incorporate with respect to the minor subdivisions, all those changes and this text amendment, um, before you tonight. Um, just a little history on subdivisions. I know this board doesn't generally review subdivisions because most of the time they are quasi-judicial hearings that go to the Board of Commissioners. There are a couple different types of subdivisions. There are no review subdivisions. Um, this is generally a recombination of existing parcels, you know, vacating property lines, and that's a no review subdivision. Doesn't require meeting the, um, the subdivision, uh, standards of the ordinance. Then there's the greater than ten-acre exemption. This is the state statute that says that lots greater than ten acres are exempt from subdivision, uh, regulations. And then a state divisions, which are court-ordered, which can be platted, but do not necessarily result in lots created for building or, building development or sale. Then as of, as of today, um, minor subdivisions are currently defined as three or fewer lots from the parent parcel as it existed on April second nineteen eighty-nine. And so that April second nineteen eighty-nine date is very important because that was the first, uh, Unified Development Ordinance date. So the, the county, you know, adopted that, which included zoning and subdivision in the same document. Prior to that, we had zoning. We've had zoning since, uh, I think sixty-five and sub, the first subdivision ordinance maybe came in the seventies, I think. So currently, that's how a minor subdivision is defined. So when an owner calls staff or comes in to see staff to say, we get the question lot, may I subdivide this lot? Sometimes it takes a good bit of research to determine what did this parcel look like in eighty-nine and how many lots have been created from it since then that count against your subdivision count. So, um, so we do that a lot. Then there are a type of minor that are called family subdivisions, which require lots to, to be conveyed to family members within two degrees of kinship. And that allows actually a total of five lots currently. I'll back up real quickly with the, with, no, I'll, I'll hold that for the next slide. So, and then back in twenty thirteen, we had a private citizen sponsor text amendment for the family lots that the parent parcel date would reset every ten years. So for family splits, it's not April second nineteen eighty-nine, it's the date of the prior split, ten years from that and then five additional lots. So that was something that the board did approve back in twenty thirteen. And then there are major subdivisions, which are any other type of subdivision is gonna be a major subdivision. I could talk about this all night, but I'll, I'll be as brief, brief as possible in my head. I'm like, there was the one, we won't talk about everything, but. So just kind of give you a little bit of background on some of the, the considerations with respect to subdivision ordinances and minor subdivisions. North Carolina Fire Code requires that subdivisions or really new streets that involve three or more lots, so creating three or more lots on a new street are subject to the North Carolina Fire Code. That basically means fire access road on twenty foot minimum width, driving surface. Our ordinance requires two feet of shoulder stone on either side to stabilize that driving surface. Then there's fire flow, which is, you know, water, like water sources for fighting fires that are requirements of that. And the fire apparatus turnarounds at some point, that's required if it's more than two lots on a new street. So just a little bit of summary and some history of minor subdivisions and where we are now with our ordinance. Back in twenty thirteen, the board, no, twenty nineteen, sorry, the board reduced the minor lots, the minor subdivision lots from five to three. Splits from the parent parcel, that's that April second eighty-nine date. And, um, but, but really practically, it was difficult to get three lots, so really you were getting two lots. And in order to do two lots, you had to build a street. So your lots had to front on a private access street. You could not create new lots on an N C D O T street. And then, as I mentioned, we allow up to five family lots with the parent parcel reset. Back in twenty nineteen, the, that prohibited the creation of minor lots on DOT street. I already said that. And then with that amendment, it was required that if you were creating a private access street, if you couldn't convert an existing driveway to the private access street, you'd have to remove that existing driveway. And a lot of times you have situations where a house has been there established, the driveway's established and people are accustomed to using it. And they don't want to go through the, the trouble of changing it and the expense of, of changing it. So that was definitely a spot where staff did get some pushback on that over the years. And then with that same twenty nineteen ordinance, and this really was related to the Fire Code requirements. It was defined that subdivisions that, that have significant infrastructure could not be permitted as a minor subdivision. So those are the, the subdivisions that require a road installed in N C D O T standards, a fire hydrant or a fire pond. Also, minor lots in ag, agriculture zoning, were required to be three acres if, if you were not on county water. So a three acre minimum lot size to create, create a lot in ag. And minor lots in the residential zoning district had to connect to water or else you do not have the potential to do a minor subdivision, which is prohibited for quite a few property owners. So we took some of this history to the board with some alternatives. And this is a, kind of the high points of the text amendment that's before you tonight that the board directed. There used to be, before that twenty nineteen change, there was minors, there was like a private access subdivision, which allowed up to five on a gravel road. And if you recall, you know, we defined significant infrastructure here. So we said if you had to put in a hydrant or any kind of fire pond, then that was, could not be permitted as a minor. And so, um, hold on, where am I? Oh. So that was another option that was floated at the February work session was having an, having a minor subdivision and then having this private access alternative. But then when we got into the ordinance and started to write it, it just made sense to make the minor five. And where Fire Code requires your road to have, to meet Fire Code, then you meet Fire Code. And if it doesn't, then you don't, but you're still limited to the, the five splits for, for minor subdivisions. The board directed staff to allow creation of minor lots on N C D O T streets. So there's not a requirement for a new street to be built. We were having a lot of new private access streets for one or two lots being created. We did provide some access control on your major arterial and restricted access streets. Those are going to be one fifty-eight, one sixty-eight, thirty-four, one thirty-six, six fifteen and twelve. And restricted access streets, Tolls Creek Road, Papa Branson, South Mills Road. So there, there will be some access controls for those streets with the, this proposed ordinance. Again, like I said, new streets that serve more than two lots must meet the Fire Code. The board wanted to allow subdivisions in ag at forty thousand square foot lots regardless of water connection. And also wanted to allow some minor subdivisions in the S F M district without water connection. And, um, also, we're gonna amend the ordinance provision that requires an existing driveway to be removed if it's not converted to the private access street. So those lots that are already on the roads can retain their frontage, retain their access and still potentially create one or two more lots on certain streets. And then we did craft an alternative language that allows one flag lot as a minor based on the parent parcel as it existed April second nineteen eighty-nine, so a maximum of one flag lot. There's a reason we did that and we can talk about that when we get to that section of the ordinance. So getting to the ordinance changes, we'll just kind of go through all the strike throughs. You can see here that we're just redefining in chapter two, section two point four point eight, we're redefining a minor subdivision that it consists of the division of land into five or fewer lots, including the residual parcel of less than ten acres. That does not constitute a no review subdivision is a minor and also a family subdivision is a type of minor subdivision that allows additional lots, that parent parcel reset I was talking about, where lots may only be conveyed to family members within two degrees of kinship. And they're subject to the minor subdivision standards as well as additional standard for family subdivisions. This is just a little clarity in the family subdivision section. We, I, I just added this language about within two degrees of kinship for clarity. And then in number three here, you can see that the initial conveyance of a lot in a family subdivision to a non-family member is a violation of the ordinance. That, those words, the initial, will help staff answer the question of, you know, when do I have to, you know, convey this to whom? So whenever it is conveyed, it has to go to a family member within, within two degrees of kinship. Just clarifying language. And then we get to the minor subdivision review standards that the subdivision should comply with the dimensional standards of the zoning district's chapter. Community form standards, which are related to driveway and access standards and required infrastructure, which is street standards, where applicable. Again, changing the three lots to five lots and requiring that the parent parcel and resultant lots front an existing DOT maintained street or a private access street. No more than three access points from the parent parcel may be created along major arterial or restricted access streets. So those were the streets we just reviewed. It does not create a private access street serving more than five lots. Any private access create, street created shall connect to an existing N C D O T maintained public street and comply with the private access street standards. And any private access street serving more than two lots shall meet North Carolina Fire Code, including a fire apparatus turnaround and fire flow requirements. Here's some additional standards for family subdivisions. You can see here that we're just reiterating that lots shall be initially conveyed to family members. Adding another example of parent there, Jason made the comment that it appears that it can only go to someone that's maybe younger or an heir. You can also deed those lots to a parent or grandparent. We're gonna take out the requirement that ingress and egress to a lot shall not be from a major arterial and that private access streets are easements. So some of the feedback we got in June was that the board did want to continue or to allow rather family subdivision lots to be created on easements provided that this, the access is constructed prior to those lots being approved and still no more than five lots on a, on a private access street or an easement. And then we discussed with the county attorney this additional language. And number four here, that newly created and existing easements shall be improved to meet the private access street standards and documentation of the permanent and non-exclusive easement shall be provided to the county. We just want to make sure that if folks are using an existing easement to create new lots, that they have the authority to do so. And that if they're creating new easements, that, that that access remains. And then just to call your attention, family lots are limited to single family dwellings and customary accessory uses. So you can't do family lots like in a commercial zoning district and build a commercial structure. That probably will be, be less problematic. Not that it's really been a problem that I know of, but with the current minor subdivision changes, if they're approved, it will give flexibility even to the G B lot owners to create a couple of lots through the minor process. This is, changes to when I said before about not requiring water connection to get the reduced lot size in ag zoning district. So this is the strike through here that basically allows minor and family lots to be forty thousand square feet in ag. Then there was this provision that required that lot depth shall not exceed four times the lot width. And you can see here that in conservation subdivisions, that does not apply. And we're suggesting that that doesn't apply also to the minor subdivisions. You may think of like a parcel that might be three hundred feet wide and maybe it's long and skinny and someone just wants to cut that in half. What we didn't want to bump up against was that this lot to depth ratio prohibits that simple subdivision. So we're striking that here from the ordinance. We did get feedback from the board and they thought that they wanted to proceed with that as my understanding. Then the same in S F M, we're just changing the depth ratio for those minor subdivision lots. The street standards. So since we're allowing more than the two lots on a private access street, we've amended the street standards of the ordinance to reflect that. So you can see there's a strike through here of streets. So we're removing the serving three or more lots. So the standards apply to all streets unless they're exempt and comply with the private access street standards here. So a private access street is proposed to be within a family subdivision or serving a subdivision of five or fewer lots. And that street's exempted from the standards of the full section of, of the street standards, but it has to comply with the private access street standards, which is the construction standard for how you have to build the street. Still has to connect to an N C D O T maintained street and needs to meet the minimum width right away with requirements. And then, um, there's this provision here that allows additional private access streets for family subdivisions. So with the, uh, with the minor subdivisions, you get one private access street per parent parcel as it existed in nineteen eighty-nine. But staff was seeing that we have this ten year reset for family subdivisions. But if you're limited to only one private access street, then probably what you're doing is, is creating lots along a road or just prohibiting people from taking advantage of that reset. So this was language that allows additional private access streets for family subdivisions. Additionally, this is proposed, these are proposed changes. I don't have on the slide deck the original, the, the current figure here in six point two point one B. In your, in your packet on page thirty, if you're curious, you can see that basically the differences here are that this easement is going from fifteen feet to ten feet on either side to get this ditch in here a foot and a half deep with three to one slopes. You don't need a full fifteen feet to do that. Still maintaining a twenty-four foot right away with the two foot shoulders stone and the twenty foot driving surface. And then this is the, this is the road configuration that's typically used. You can see it's a road that's sloped towards a ditch, reducing the easement width there from fifteen to ten. And just cleaning up that standard to what we're, we're seeing more of, just to try to make it more clear as well. And then we're gonna add this language to the figure that private access streets created or improved shall provide adjacent swales or ditches to capture runoff from the street. And that existing swales or ditches may be used to capture runoff if the owner demonstrates the authority to drain to the existing swale or ditch. And that this figure provides construction standards for private access streets. Just put this in the, in the, the slideshow here as well as in the ordinance, just so you could see this language already exists. But there was some, if you went back, let me just go back here and I'll show you. You can see that this was basically saying that if you're exempt, the street standards don't apply to you. And then it went on to say that private access streets were exempt. So you would never go check that section. So now we're adding this section so it's referenced that yes, these right away street width standards do apply to minor subdivisions. And so you can see that here. Twenty-four foot right of way, twenty foot pavement width, two foot shoulders, does not have to meet N C D O T design or construction standards. These are the changes to the required infrastructure section for water. This continues the implementing that change that allows minor lots to be created without connecting to county water. So we're clarifying here and then we're instead of just new subdivisions in ag, we're saying major subdivisions in ag shall be connected if they're within the distance formula. So again, clarification for that. Then this is in the, in the definitions and measurement chapter, which is chapter ten. This, this provision about family subdivision lots exists in the ordinance and this part B was one of the things that we took to the board at the June work session because the language we felt was conflicting with what other sections of the ordinance were requiring. It was saying that new lots have to front on a new street or if it's family, it can go on a DOT street. And so we got feedback from the board. They indicated that they did want to allow family subdivision lots to be created on easements, not streets. And so we just added this language to clarify that easements created shall be improved to meet the private access street standards. Then these are the changes to the definitions that this text amendment will impact. Private access street going from two to five lots. A major subdivision will be defined as any subdivision that does not constitute a no review minor or family subdivision. And a minor subdivision is division of land into five or fewer lots that does not constitute a no review subdivision. This is the alternative language. Maybe you noticed that in the agenda packet that there, there's current language that flag lots are prohibited where they would result in an increased number of lots on collector or arterial streets. And that no more than five percent of lots in a new subdivision shall be configured as flag lots, which basically means that you can't do a flag lot unless you have a twenty lot subdivision, then you can do one. So, um, but we felt that there were, there were probably instances where lots are existing on DOT streets or there's large tracts of land with maybe not a lot of road frontage that allowing one flag lot per parent parcel may be beneficial to some property owners. So staff was just giving this option. And some changes to the definition of flag lot. So staff was just giving this option and some changes to the definition of flag lot to make it more clear with what flag lots actually are. This this last line here of the flag lot definition is one that's really problematic because it's not really true. It's not, the flag arm of a lot is not normally a private right-of-way. It's still part of the lot and you're using it for access. The ordinance says you can't count that towards minimum lot area, which I think we're fine with, but it's not a separate private right-of-way. So just wanted to clean that up if the board does decide to approve that. And then we did propose that the frontage of those flag lots should be 20 feet, so enough room for access and some setback, which currently does not exist in the ordinance. And again, if you're not familiar with a flag lot, here's an example of a flag lot I think we've covered all the changes. I'm not going to rehash this for you, but they're here if you want to ask any questions. You just reviewed a text amendment, so you're familiar with the review standards of the ordinance. And staff does recommend approval because the request is consistent with Imagine Curry Tuck goal, land use goal one. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Lot of information.
There's a lot of information.
Nineteen sixties, is that where we something? Did you get a headache doing this?
No, I loved it. Every minute of it.
The thing I have is having a well on 40,000 square feet. I did some little background looking. DEQ says, yeah, it could be done if the soil type is suitable for well and septic. However, they recommend one full acre for that reason. My concern is cross-contamination of septic into wells, especially if you've got three or four lots, you know, divide up or one behind you. And you have to have 100-foot separation between drain fields and a well and 50 feet to the septic, which, you know, you could probably work that out like that, but you're not leaving a whole lot of land left for a future potential to do anything with. There's not a lot there. So I mean, 40,000, difference between 40,000 and an acre of ground is about a quarter of an acre. Currently, they're sitting on three, which I see on Pudding Ridge Road because I pass them every day. I would like, I think 40,000 is a little too small for a well and septic, just based on the possibility of cross-contamination. My personal well is only down 32 feet. That's not a lot. And I've seen wells be contaminated from neighbors and their, you know, what they're doing or wherever it comes from. We see, I've seen contaminated wells for that reason. That's my biggest concern is the well-septic combination on that small of a lot.
Any more questions for Jenny or any more comments?
How does this impact the schools? And I mean, we're we're having a hard time now trying to calculate. I mean, how do you, how do you keep the calculations up with that when it's a no-review?
But there's a limit on the number of lots. I mean, we're, that's limited.
Yeah, five.
Right.
Up from.
It was five till 2019, for some period till 2019, and then it was three, in essence, two, and then families were still five or have been five. So we actually don't, I mean, the school numbers have not included, like when we look at committed capacity, those haven't included minors or exempt lots to this point. So but the but it seems that the num, the factors are kind of working though. So the factors are working without these lots, like the the number of children generated. Some of the data would support that. So I don't want to get into a really long discussion about the school counts because I don't have enough information right now to do that, but it certainly would be something that the board would need to consider.
Also, how long do these family plots before can can you show that, you know, I sold it to my sister and my sister turns around, sells it in a, in a week, in a day?
It's possible.
Where is there a?
There's no requirement for holding it for a certain number of.
Camden County actually does have a requirement in 151.2 article and transfer plat review standards, number two. Each lot created as part of a transfer plat shall be at least one acre of buildable land in area, no more than one lot shall be created from a parent of each member of immediate family. That's that's just one acre created, so I mean, I can understand that. Number two, effect. Land subject to a transfer plat shall be titled under the immediate family member's name for a period of at least five years or until the immediate family member reaches the age of 18, whichever is greater. My concern is that we're going to get an influx of uncontrolled, small parcels just here, there and everywhere. That is a concern with the schools, infrastructure, so that is my concern.
Because you think it's a little too loose on the family restriction? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, well, you know what? I don't know how you even prove like they're next of kin or do they have to require a birth certificate or something?
They generally, is it notarized, Jason?
It's a signature from the property owner that says, I hereby dedicate this lot to so-and-so who is my sister, and they sign that on the plat. But we don't police birth certificates.
Does it look like there's been any abuse of this thus far? Buying, doing a family thing and then rolling it over?
It does happen.
It does happen, but it's an abusive amount? Is that, I mean, is that like a, oh, let's do it this way and then we'll just roll them?
Well, if there's no enforcement, why can't you abuse it?
You could. I'm just curious whether it has happened.
Well, there's no requirement to to hold a lot for a certain period of time before it transfers.
It just says.
So we could just keep flipping lots.
Right.
Well, it is, it is restricted to one per person. You can't be given more than one family lot in Curry Tuck County.
If I have four sisters.
Well, then you can make.
Okay.
And they can, they can be deeded to them and then immediately.
Sold.
Sold.
So basically, we could be skirting around the whole issue of really just going through.
Just keep in mind, though, that the minor and the family standards are generally similar now. The minor's gone to five, so the use of the family may not be needed as as much as it, you know, that use of it. The difference will be if there was a parcel that had that 10-year reset. Because the families have been five. Minors have been three, practically two. Now the minors are going to five, which is similar to what it was pre-2019.
So the families have always been at five?
Five, to my.
Okay.
Well, at some point, there was a, there was a little different language for family lots. I think it was like one per year. There, there's been several iterations of language pre-2013 with respect to family lots, but.
Make sure I understood you correctly a minute ago. When you were talking about you can only have one family lot given to you, is that what you said?
Yeah, each person can only receive one family lot.
Like so?
In Curry Tuck County.
One time only?
Yep.
Up from three acres to one now, one acre.
No, they were not three acres before. They, family lots are 40,000 square feet then and if the amendment passes.
Well, family lots have always been 40,000 square feet unless you're in the off-road area, when the the base zoning control is 120,000. So the family lots haven't changed. What did change, though, was the ability to do a minor subdivision without county water in ag at an acre, 40,000 square feet.
That's.
And the ability to do.
Huge.
And the ability to do a minor subdivision at all in residential without water.
Uh huh.
So it's capped at 40,000 square feet. I mean, that's the number.
What do you mean by that?
Which is not even an acre.
Right. So what if they had more land available, could it, and could actually have three-acre lots for each one?
Oh, sure. Yeah, it's a minimum. That's a minimum of 40,000.
It's just the minimum, okay. And so in that particular case, I kind of agree with you. That's pretty darn tight in areas where well and septic are still, you know, that are permitted. And that's a, that's a big concern where we are too. I mean, it's all sand out there, so, but there's not as much impervious compared to where we are, but but that's tight out there as well. And I think right now, even the code, well, you could apply for variance off of, off of that and move it to 50 feet within a well, correct?
The health department has.
Right.
They have the ability to.
Because there are some 5,000-square-foot lots that are getting a septic in a well.
Yeah.
Well, keep in mind, all the off-road area lots are 20,000 square feet or 15,000 square feet and they're getting septic in well and they're very close together. Now granted, environment's different than.
They probably park better out there than they do over here.
Yeah, there's a lot of particulars in there.
Yeah.
I have, it's a tactical question. I just, I saw where you had the drainage ditch and the road used to ramp to one side and a drainage ditch, and now you're calling for a drainage ditch on both sides?
It's still, there's two options.
Oh, there is, oh, it's an option.
Two options, yeah.
Okay.
There were always two options.
Okay.
What we did was reduce the easement.
All right. I was thinking, I was, I was thinking that was a change to go to a double drainage ditch. I was starting to wonder about utilities, because most of the time they follow the road on one side and your drainage ditch is always on the other.
And this complies with the NC DOT standards, correct?
No, it's not a NC DOT street. It's not for public use. It's for private access streets only. That's why there's the gravel, ABC standard.
But there are stipulations that it has to be for fire.
Sure, it has, yes.
There's certain things that have to apply, even though it's a private road.
And that stays a private road, right? Okay.
Yes.
Again, I can't help but get scattered brain when I think about where I live. It's all private roads. It's like.
How many no-review subdivisions do we typically approve each year? Do we know?
What do you mean by that? There's so many, the types of.
So no-review includes recombinations, 10-acre exempt lots.
Well, the exempt lots.
Settlement of an estate.
Yeah.
So so these aren't no-review, the minors and families? Is that what you're asking? How many of those do we do?
Yes.
Quite a few. We haven't.
Are you asking how many no-reviews?
Because that's different than.
Our minor lot.
Minor, families are different. Those do get reviewed.
Okay, so the minor family get reviewed, the no-review, the 10 acres.
Those are exempt by the state statutes and we can't do anything about that.
Okay.
That's your.
Well, that's spelled wrong.
Very complicated, but that's, we have no, counties don't have.
These are minor plots. One, I mean, this year, if this is right, there could be families too, but that looks like two.
Ten, not a lot.
And then, okay, there's more than that, I'm sure, but it's, and then there's, let's look here, the families. Three, four.
That's not a lot.
Mm-hmm, that's going pretty far back.
Five, six, maybe seven, eight. Seems like maybe 10?
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's, that's half a year. Okay. That is a year. See, that website pulled up perfectly.
And this would be county-wide, right? This proposal?
Well, it would be county-wide, but it's going to depend on the zoning district, what you can do. And the off-road area, like I mentioned, doesn't have a 40,000-square-foot family subdivision option. It's still 120,000 square feet.
Say that again for me?
The off-road area, SFR, Single Family Residential Remote Outer Banks zoning district has a minimum lot size of 120,000 square feet regardless.
Okay.
So there's no 40,000-square-foot lot option.
But somebody having essentially 10 or 20, well, I don't think it goes anymore. Well, it does, but most of the lot, the biggest lots are 10 acres out there. They could bust that into something for family? You're saying out there even?
Uh, yeah, probably. They're minor, minor subdivisions. But they could probably, they could do that if they weren't family.
Mm-hmm.
Most likely.
Like a 10-acre platted lot right now could, could.
Possibly. Depends, I mean, how much wetlands is on it? I mean, there's so many, there's so many factors that you have to really see the property and see what they have.
10 acres of wetlands that you really.
A lot of the 10-acre lots up there are going to be impacted by wetlands.
Most of them are marsh in the back and wet in the middle and a little bit by the street.
So you need uplands.
That's true. But it's 120,000 square foot out there.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions or any more discussion?
I guess I. I'm good.
Okay. All right. Here in the discussion, I'm going to open the floor for a motion. And again, we can, we can add stipulations to it one way or the other.
I wish we talked about it, but I was going to add stipulations.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the only stipulation I've heard at this point.
To sue her.
Yours was a timeframe.
Yeah.
When you sell it to whoever, family member, that they have to hold it for, I think, would you say Camden was five years?
Camden's five years.
I mean, you can add a stipulation for that or one year. And then you talked about the size of the lot.
Yes.
40,000, preferred, preferred an acre. I mean, we can, you know, those are the two main things that I've heard as far as.
Acre minimal.
Yeah.
One full acre minimal.
And that can be added and we can add Juanita's concern with the language on, but you know, I mean, and again, we are, we are just a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
Can throw out your concerns and then the commissioners can.
Throw out our concerns.
But no, that, I mean, that's the two things that I've heard, if I'm correct, that are the main things that people seem to have an issue with.
It's just, I mean, there could be a lot of just, you know, skirting around and, I mean.
Well, I mean, you putting a timeframe on it at least slows things down that, you know, you, five years.
That's only for the family subdivision.
That's it, only for the family subdivisions, which aren't that much.
All the other that you talked about that doesn't even.
And now the minors are going to be able to do five as well, so there'll probably be less people, I would assume, less people trying to do that.
Right.
The family thing.
Because you've actually loosened the standards on the minor. Yeah, so I see what you're saying, that there's not going to be as much of that playing around with the, with the stipulations that are required on minor subdivisions now where you can get more out of it.
Right.
Okay.
When you looked up the subdivisions, you looked up minor subdivisions, Jenny? When you looked up the deed?
I did minors and family. I looked at both.
How many families was there?
Uh, was there?
All right, there's no, you don't have to look.
And that's class. We didn't look at, see how many lots were created on each one, but. And 40,000 squared, 40,000 square feet has been the minimum lot size in most zoning districts for quite some time. And the health department has regulations about separation from well to septic, so.
Septic technology has changed so much now.
It has, there's so much.
There's a lot more they can do with grinder pumps and things like that than than they could even 10 years ago.
And 40,000 square feet is .92 acres already, so it's close.
Yeah.
The way it is. I just throwing that out there.
And we're moving from three to five, five lots, is that, is it?
Yeah, for minors.
About seven families.
How many in 24? Just curious.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven? Seems like more than that.
Yes. We look at a lot more.
Yeah, we look at a lot. Yeah, we look at a lot, a lot of properties.
Not all of them come to fruition, though.
And, you know, again, I'm using the description feature. This isn't like, this is just an idea.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I was just curious, I don't know if the timeline restriction on that is going to, I mean, I understand the concern, but I don't, I just don't know if that would be something that would be as impactful as we would, like what you're intending to try to.
Right. And we can, you know, we can, somebody can make a motion and anyone that has concerns, they can make a motion with their stipulations in there, and the board can vote yea or nay on it. And then if somebody wants to make a motion with just no stipulations, then of course the people that have concerns can vote against that motion.
Or you can make a motion to deny.
So, or you can make a motion to deny.
Right, exactly.
And the 40,000-square-foot lot standard's been the standard for how long?
He asked how long is 40,000 square feet been the minimum lot size in most places in zoning districts.
This is the drop down.
At least since 2013.
Yeah.
I mean, at least since 2013, but probably in prior ordinances as well.
But is that with county water or without a, with a will?
That's pretty much the minimum in most places, except when you were trying to do minor lots in the ag zoning district without county water. That was where the three acres came from.
Gotcha.
Yeah, because a lot of the parts of the county don't have access to county water, you know, which I understand.
The text amendment.
Yeah. What'd you say? Said a lot of parts of the county, especially down county, don't have access to county water.
Right.
And it does, in a way, it's punishing those people that aren't closer to that infrastructure, the landowners, than other people. So, I mean, I understand that.
Yeah.
Say that again, what you said that before, the three acres is going away.
That's part of this text amendment.
Yeah.
Is to allow creation of lots in the ag district or any minor lots without that three-acre requirement when you don't have water. That's correct, right? Yeah, the ag zone is changing. That was only required in the ag zone, having that three acres, if you couldn't connect to water. And now there, this text amendment is proposing that you can create a 40,000-square-foot lot in the ag zone without water.
I make a motion to deny PB 2506 Carrituck County text amendment because it is not inconsistent with the Imagine Carrituck 2040 plan.
Okay, we have a motion for denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. I would thank y'all of that denial.
That's fine.
Okay, but I mean, you need to.
You two need to say aye.
Oh, aye.
Yeah, okay. So we have two in favor of denial, and all those opposed, say aye. Aye. Motion does not pass. Okay.
Then that's it.
But we didn't approve it.
It becomes approved.
I want to make sure.
Those are in the cherry.
We understood that, right. The rest of the ayes were the approve of it, right?
Well, it was, I just, you know.
I thought I was just voting against it.
Oh, you were, okay.
They can, we can, somebody else can open, we can open a motion to approve it, is what I'm saying, you know? We've denied it, but I think we can.
Instead of doing it yea or nay, huh?
Well, no, I'm, we have to vote on it. When a motion is made, we have to.
I thought we were just voting on her motion.
We were.
So, okay.
So I just want to make sure.
So did we have yays and nays on there?
Well, yeah, you guys, I mean, make sure, Sherri, we got this straight, okay? Okay, a motion, yeah, but when a denial happens, it gets a little strange.
Yeah, it does.
I thought it approved.
We had a motion to deny. Yeah, we had a motion to deny, we had a second, the people that, then we voted on it. And of course, the people that made the motion, I would assume, voted for it, for the denial. Okay? So we had two for that motion, and the rest of the board voted against it. So it wasn't approved.
One, two, three, four.
The sad part is, is.
No, it wasn't approved. That's, I just want to make sure we're clear.
So much development right there at Mo York.
Well, yeah, but that's for denial. It wasn't for approval.
It was just to deny her.
And the problem is the county.
Oh, did I hear, okay.
Right, and see, somebody else can make a motion, tweak it.
I'm going to, so you're saying I should make the motion?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. If we, if, once we voted on it.
It's a five to two vote right now.
To not.
For denial or against denial.
The voting for denial did not pass. So you may open the floor for another motion.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We can open the floor for another motion.
I ain't nobody just want to make another motion.
Yeah, we can make.
Go ahead, Tom, I'll give it to you.
All right. I move to approve PB 2506 Carrituck County text amendment because the request is inconformance with the goals and objectives and policies of Imagine Carrituck 2040 Vision Plan and the UDO, including Land Use Goal 1.
Okay, we have a motion for approval on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise?
No.
Opposed.
Okay. All right. So it passes. I know when denials happen, it gets a little, yeah, because it's not dead when that happens.
I thought it. It would only be dead, no, it's not dead. I thought that it just.
It's a tie vote, if it was a tie vote.
A tie vote, it's even.
It would go forward as denial, but it was not a tie vote.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, it doesn't happen too often, but I know we've had it occasionally. Okay, any announcements?